All this morning.
I didn't know he was installing a indoor pool. I don't think he did either.
Yep, it's eight o'clock. Let's stand and do the pledge. I pledge to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order, eight o'clock. And leave anyone for public discussion? I don't think so. With that, we will move. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated April twenty-third?
And the twenty-second.
Oh, yep, dated Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, and Tuesday, April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four.
Someone?
Motion by Wachter. Second? Second by Jarks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Present years of service awards.
None of them are going to be here in person, so they're signed, so I'll put them in the sheriff's office box if that's okay.
Okay, yep. We will move on from that to setting the date and time for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, Cassuth County Budget Amendment. Information we need to know on that, Tammy?
So I'm asking you to set it for May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, at eight o'clock AM, so that we can get it published in the paper. I will be emailing you that information of what's on the budget amendment this week sometime, but I'm asking you to set the date for eight-thirty on May twenty-first.
Do we have a motion to the effect of setting the time and date for May twenty-first at eight AM for the public hearing? Motion by Flah. Now, second? Second by Wachter. Excuse me, second by Jarks. Any discussion?
Uh, was it a public hearing, just budget amendment, correct?
It's a public hearing.
Or it's a public hearing for the budget.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Budget amendment hearing. Any else? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. We're up to discussion decision for adoption resolution of the Cassuth County Multi-Jurisdictional Mitigation Plan. Grissa.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So thanks for having me. So the, just to kind of get some of your nuances up to date, hazard mitigation plan, this is basically a public document, guided document identifies our vulnerabilities here in Cassuth, such as our natural disasters, floods, hail drought, wildfires, winter storms, summer storms. This plan also sets our goals, establishes mitigation alternatives, and prioritizes our projects, and alleviates any potential damage to property and provides protection when future disasters occur. The current Cassuth County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan was approved by FEMA on August of twenty nineteen. The Hazard Mitigation Plan is a requirement of the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand administered by FEMA with a five-year cycle, and as such, the Cassuth County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan expires this August of twenty twenty-four. Cassuth County Emergency Management Agency applied for the Hazard Mitigation Grant beginning in February of twenty twenty-three and hired a consultant to facilitate the plan update process. Cassuth County Emergency Management contracted with JEO Consulting for the preparation of our local mitigation plan update. This draft is the result of an extensive collaboration between the county, communities, school districts, and stakeholders. The planning committee identified five goals. These goals were, one, to minimize the vulnerability of the people and their property in Cassuth County to the impacts of hazards; two, protect critical facilities, infrastructure, and other community assets from impacts of hazards; improve education and awareness regarding hazards and risk in Cassuth County; strengthen communication regarding hazard mitigation among agencies and between agencies and the public; and develop or improve planning ordinances and building codes to increase capabilities, procedures, resilience across Cassuth County. Our round-one meeting was held August ninth for a community worksheet review update with submission of JEO in September. Round-two meeting was held January second, twenty twenty-four, for plan interrogation and continued update to community worksheets to include mitigation project review or adding any new mitigation projects. Once the worksheets were submitted and integrated into the plan, the draft was submitted for public review, which closed April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Based on FEMA's requirements, the Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Mitigation Plan must be formally adopted by each participating jurisdiction through approval of a resolution. This approval will create individual ownership of the plan by each participant, as well as become eligible for grants to assist with implementation of a wide variety of projects listed in the plan. The final plan must be approved by Iowa Homeland Security and FEMA before it becomes official. So I'm here this morning to ask the board supervisors to approve and adopt the Cassuth County Multi-Jurisdiction Hazard Plan by resolution. And I think I gave you all a copy of the resolution. You just need to read it or even hear it.
They have it in their back.
Everyone had a chance to review that. Today, the resolution would be?
Zero four, three zero, two four, zero one.
Zero four, three zero?
Two four.
Two four, zero one. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion by Jarks. Second?
I'll second.
Second by Wachter. Any discussion on the resolution? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Same. Motion carries.
Tammy, once that gets signed, can I get a copy of that, so I can just submit that?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks, Grissa.
Thanks, Grissa.
Okay, we're up to discussion. Decision to approve the contract with Cassuth Regional Health Center for the Transport of Mental Health Patients. Good morning, Phil.
Morning.
And we discussed this last week.
Tammy sent an email to the auditor. I did not see anything come back, Tammy, did you?
She called me.
Okay.
I told you about the conversation I had with her on the phone, and she, her wording is, it looks a little shady. Because why would you want to? Well, first, in first, why would you want to do something through EMS if you can't identify yourself as EMS? And secondly, you know, if you're not, if you can't represent yourself as EMS, why would it be coming out of the EMS phone that's levied for by EMS? But she said that, you know, she, she didn't know what government of state that Phil had talked to or where that information had come from, so it's hard for her to give a full answer without knowing more details. But, you know, she said at this point, she, her question would be, should it be funded out of something if you can't represent yourself as that entity?
I think the issue is that we received mental health grand dollars for that, but EMS is not a mental health service, and so we're kind of crossing a little bit of lines there.
So.
Inevitably.
Yeah, so the grant, the way the grant was written, it was written twofold. One side was for this mental health transport, the other side was for this response for first response in the county for either mental health patients or medical trauma patients, whatever the call is. When Baker did the same grant, they're not doing any mental health transports, they're only doing the first response for their vehicle. So they're just doing that side of it, both medical trauma and if it happened to be a mental health patient, so that's how they did theirs. We wrote ours that included both sides. It's a fine line, it's, you know, to me, it's how we want to do it, because the vehicle is insured under the EMS budget. It's, the fuel and everything's under the EMS budget. We do use it for that response. Now, if we start doing this transport, we would refund that money back into the EMS, so EMS would be liable for paying for that service.
It'd still have to pay for it upfront.
Correct.
So it's still paying for it.
Correct. But we're saving on the other side, because now I don't have to transport mental health patients with an ambulance and two staff. So it blends in with EMS, but it can't function as an EMS. Is what really makes it complicated.
It works together, but they're different.
Correct.
Services, yeah. Does the, just out of curiosity, does transporting mental health patients, does that change your insurance at all as far as?
Yes, there's going to be additional charge. I did call the insurance company, there's going to be additional charge for that. I still haven't gotten clarification. I mentioned that last week, it's going fifty percent of the premium. I haven't got clarification if it's fifty percent of the liability premium or fifty percent of the total premium.
Okay.
But it's just the premium on that one vehicle, not the policy premium. So it's not going to be a huge charge, but.
And that's included in, I mean, that's not a separate insurance, that's just part of the package for the vehicle.
Correct, substantial charge for that service on that vehicle.
So we're really using the same vehicle for two different services is the issue we're running into there.
Correct.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how you get around that.
We never dreamt it would be this complicated when we started this process.
I mean, if you want two different vehicles, that's, that don't make sense either.
Well, the part that scares me on this mental health transport is taking that vehicle out of service for multiple hours every day and not having available for that response for EMS. I mean, we started this as an EMS service, as a way to make EMS better in Cassuth County, and it seems like we just keep diverting more services into it, you know, like medical examiner. You know, I was a medical examiner when we started, now we're doing that, and now we're going to add on mental health transports. So it seems like we're just kind of doing all these side jobs on top of our focus job of being EMS.
Want to make sure that we're not just using the levy, because the dollars are there for other services.
Which we would. Like Tammy said, it's, we're going to pay it upfront, we're going to get it back, so really no levy dollars would be going to support.
They are upfront, they still are. Even if you're refunded, yeah, but you can't do that.
Still being used.
Yeah.
So the grant was, you were on that board then?
Donnie wrote.
Donnie's the one that did this.
I've seen the grant, though, yeah.
The grant was written for mental health or not?
And that's where Care Connections has to have a report of mental health activity that you've used your grant dollars for, so for that vehicle, they need a, some type of documentation to justify the dollars, otherwise, I mean, they can request dollars back or whatever.
That's, that's my other side, if we don't use it for what the grant was intended for, are we in trouble?
We just flip the grant back.
Right, you'd have to give the money back.
So this is a two-edged sword that we're talking about right now.
And unfortunately, you know, hindsight's always twenty-twenty, you know, looking back on this, I can see down the road, if we're going to continue to do this mental health transport, it's, we're probably going to have to buy another vehicle and use that vehicle strictly for either the transport or EMS and not try to mingle the two vehicles together.
And that's not really cost-effective either.
I don't know if you can generate enough revenue through mental health just to support all of that. That's why the idea of using this as a joint venture was, you could pencil it out.
Yeah. Well, it's not cost-effective to ever share, transport people that he doesn't need to do either.
Correct. Like I say, if this evolves and, you know, we start doing these transports with retired people to, so our deputies aren't having to do these transports, you could be gone every day, and at that point, you could justify it.
Yeah. Or even with what we're doing, also with grant dollars, aiding and grant dollars with Marissa, some of the mental health services, I mean, that's a joint venture with the city. I'm not saying Marissa should, you know, just go and transport everyone, but I, in the future, might be something to look at in adding that budget or a different budget back in that was taken away years ago. I don't know.
Just applies to the vehicle, correct? Not labor?
No, I realize that, I'm just thinking, in the big picture of things, down the road, but right now, right now, we have to decide what to do with the vehicle.
So whoever takes the transport, who's paying that wage?
It'll have to come out of the revenue we receive from the hospital.
Is it going to be enough to cover the cost?
Yes.
So does, do we have to set up a separate fund to do that?
That's the big question.
And then how do we do that when you have a vehicle that's being used by two different departments?
I know, but we could track the labor, couldn't we, Tammy?
And you would have your.
Would that make it better or just?
Proximate.
I, I think you need to do more research on this before making a decision. I think this is bigger than just, I mean, I, I think we need to make some contacts with the Department of Management to find out how this should be tracked and funded, because.
I think, yeah, we could separate the vehicle, Tammy, by mileage and have that.
Well, the vehicle's already paid for, so.
I know, but you.
As far as the service, yeah.
We did need to run fuel separate, I mean, we just get a different fuel file from, from them and just fill up with fuel when they return, and we would know exactly the fuel cost. The insurance cost, I mean, we could break that out, that wouldn't be an issue.
You could spread that by percentage, but the labor, you could actually pay.
So if I'm going to use drivers from EMS to drive under that, do that have to be hired by a separate department or how is that all?
Well, it's kind of like, it's kind of like Donna with having, she's the same job, but she's getting paid from two different funds.
Right.
And general assistants in HR, or Aaron being a weak commissioner and senatorian, I mean, it happens.
It's possible.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's possible, we just need to figure out the right way to do it.
Right, I, I don't think we can pass this today until we clear some of that up. If it makes sense to you.
Yeah.
Because I think we, we should have it crystal clear how we're going to do this.
Yeah.
It's.
I agree, yep. Yep.
I can see how it's workable, but this isn't workable yet.
See the logic, just make sure we're doing it right.
Yeah. Long procedure to get to know where, wasn't it?
It's fine with me, I, like I say, I get called twenty-four hours a day for EMS, now I get called twenty-four hours a day for medical examiner, I really don't want to do another job, I'm going to get called twenty-four hours a day, so it's no, it doesn't matter to me either way.
Well, should we table this?
Yeah, we're going to figure all that out and work with Tammy.
I will send an email to the Department of Management today, and I'll copy you guys all in it, so you can see the response.
Sounds good. We'll go from there.
Perfect.
Okay, we will table that for today and move on to, thank you, Phil. We'll move on to discussion decision to approve agreement with Credit Management Services Incorporated.
So I did go talk to Todd after the meeting last week. Todd said that he would be happy to help us as, on a case-by-case basis. As things come up, he said he may be able to help with some, some of them he probably cannot. As far as the stuff that's going to be rolled to us, he doesn't want anything to do with that. Like he said, this, this company doesn't going to cost us anything unless they actually collect, so he said it'd be good just to have a contract with them anyway. He's, he's in favor of that, he had no issue with that company. And then it'd just be up to me to contact Todd when we have something that comes up and see which way he wants to do it, if we do it through the county or if we go through them. So, but kind of be a joint venture, whatever we can do that the cheapest will, will do.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agreement with Credit Management? Motion by Jarks? I'll second it. Any discussion on the motion? If not, did you have something? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimous.
Thanks.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Give questions on that, just holler.
I'll tell you in it too. Did you need him to sign that agreement or you sign it?
Oh, I, I guess I did.
Good morning, Doug.
But I didn't know.
We are up to it.
I'll bring it up to you. We just saw him inside it, that was good, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll be up soon.
We can chuck it out today and get done by nine o'clock.
Yeah.
Break the record.
We're efficient, I don't know, we'll break our record. We had, what was that one meeting that lasted like three minutes?
Oh, that was a special meeting, though.
That was special, let's hear the board meeting. My clock's pretty open, the, the best we've ever did.
Well, we can take a short meeting after the last few weeks.
Really?
All averages out. It looks like you're the big winner, so.
Yeah, I, I got the most. I'm the winner. It's unusual, usually it's not.
Yeah. They must all be underwater up there, so they're not worried about the drainage part.
There's some underwater up there.
Yeah, there's some ponds.
We had a couple inches of rain, you guys won't have any. Did you?
Good morning, everyone.
Morning. You're up to it right away whenever you are ready.
Okay, um, the first request, this is from Creek Enterprise. This is associated with the bridge on the Bode Hobart Road, P thirty, that is going to be replaced. They have a permit to realign some transmissions, communication lines. It's Communication Kewall, I think it's Coppers. I would recommend that the board would approve this request. Tammy.
Okay. Yep, the motion by Wachter already. Do we have a second? I can second it.
Yeah.
Any discussion on the work to be done? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, same side? Motion carries.
And then there's also a request, this one's from Iowa Lake's Electric Cooperative. They have some, it'd be between section sixteen and nine, a sway a township, four hundred fortieth street. They have some overhead poles that need to be replaced, so they are, would be replacing three, I believe it's three poles with five, so we're going to shorten up the spans there. And again, I'd recommend that this maintenance would be approved, excuse me.
Motion by Jarks? Second by Flah. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimous. Discussion?
Uh, get these signed. Carter, thank you.
Carter's trying to break the record, be done before noon.
Oh. Something like that. Racing today.
We're, we're efficient today.
Well, I'll try to.
Oh, you're fine.
Try to not interfere with that plan, I'll put it that way. The, we've talked a little bit about it, but the four-day work week for the Secretary of Road Department, that'll start next week. I did get a letter out to a couple of landowners where we had probably been of wind erosion, and I received word back, I sent that to the board, I believe you guys, I believe I emailed it anyway.
I did, yeah.
Anyway, I did receive word back from those landowners, and they both apologized for what had happened, and hopefully, in a few weeks, with some of these rains, grass will grow and we'll not see anything. The tile road crossing policy, is everyone comfortable with changing that? One word from paying for or provide, just to provide that material, is everyone comfortable with that? Well, then I'll put that on the agenda next week, and we'll get that changed, and hopefully then too, Doug Crouch and I will get a, get our application process a little amended, and we'll bring that up to the board as well. Construction, the job south of Titanka, they have driven north, the north of, or, excuse me, the north pier pile, and now they're moving to the north of Butler Pile. Merriman's have poured the barrier rail on the bridge down by George Gunter's, so now they're cleaning up, and they have a subcontractor that will put one line of approach rail on that. Resurfacing, we did have a pre-con last week. They are going to be starting the Colden Place Recycling up on A sixteen anytime, and then they plan to resurface towards the end of May. Crack filling maintenance work is being done around Wesley on Old Eighteen. We're getting a lot of shoulder maintenance completed this week on paved roads, pulling the shoulders back in. Looking a little bit at the request for quotes, should be sending those out this week, or the more greater, maybe possibly two. Just look at our budget and loader. And just waiting for Summit Carbon Solutions with a public meeting in June with zoning and the financial assurance for the ways of management. Have you heard anything, Tammy, about the Elizabeth and getting that auditor's report complete?
I know, I talked to her last week on Thursday, and she was working on it and hoped to have it done soon, so I expect it anytime.
Okay, very good, that's all that I have.
Summer doesn't have a date for the meeting?
I have not heard of anything, I mean, they asked for May, and I think the utility board requested they push it back to June, but I haven't heard an exact date yet.
Yep. Very good.
And Doug, if you want to stop up to my office, I did make contact with Ann about Tiff, and she is available to meet with us this week, so if you want to stop up and we can find a time.
Very good, all right. All right.
Anything else for Doug?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Good job, head of schedule.
Good. She's okay, I guess.
I did text March.
Oh, you did text March, okay. We're at the drainage. Good morning, March.
Good morning, March.
Oh, clean now? Oh, okay. You got first today?
Some repair, re-twists. Magic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you then. Have a good week.
Yeah, thanks you too.
What'd you get?
Oh, we got one. It's number thirty in District one oh eight. It's a tile that's might be plugged under the road or in the field, they're not sure, Blair's working on it. And that one's being taken care of by Blair. I have one that's in CRP in Drain Number Seven in Sherman Township. Um, it's in CRP and right now the water's low, so I can't tell you what we're, what we're gonna do or who we're gonna have to fix it yet until I can see what's wrong with it. I hope it's not a whole bunch of collapsed. And then we have one, number twenty-seven and one thirty-three, water washed out in the ditch bank, it's in CRP. And why don't you have Wrightsill fix that? March?
Okay.
And that's it.
I have number twenty-nine here in Drain District number one hundred and seventy-seven. Along the open ditch, there's a culvert that needs repaired, Prairie Twenty-eight, it it's a level B road in the ditch that's going into a drainage ditch. The culvert threw a little bit of rain there and it's, the lane is being sunk, it's sunk in there. Needs some repair. It's for Dan Hilbert. Okay. There are a motion to, for the supervisor to take care of the request, so move by Plath, second, second by Wacker. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimous. Anything else, March?
I don't know. Did you get the email for the Supreme Court ruling for Drain Eighteen has affirmed?
No.
Was sent out, back and forward to you.
I have so many emails after the last couple of weeks, I was gonna spend some time cleaning.
Okay, yeah, the Supreme Court ruling affirmed the District Court ruling, so that's
Okay.
Been dismissed or?
That's dismissed now.
Okay.
That's one dismissed.
Yeah, that's all I got.
Did you receive, or, or this is just to me, I just got an email from Colin. Saying Carter, good afternoon, just wanted to give you a quick update, most of my recent work lately has been trying to find funding opportunities, we've contacted Iowa Homeland Security, NRCS Farm Bureau, Senator Ernst's office, John Corbett, and Iowa Department of Agriculture, no luck so far unfortunately. Uh, I knew upfront that it was somewhat of a long shot, but as time goes on, it's looking less and less likely. Funding, I know how I'd look and do a couple of things too. Not, not coming up with much, so. So, anyhow.
Sounds good. Anybody else have anything? Okay, thanks.
I've got a couple of things I'll stop, talk to you about in the office.
Okay.
Thanks, March. Yep, thanks, March. Okay, discussion with the county auditor? That's you?
Yeah, okay, so the interim breakfast is Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, and I know we talked about it um, before Carter was not here, Carter, do you plan on attending the breakfast?
Wednesday?
Yes, May twenty-ninth at seven thirty at the Columbia Event Center, I know the rest of you except for Roger said you were gonna be able to go, is that correct?
Yes, I'll go.
Okay.
I'll just write it down here. What time is that?
It starts at seven thirty.
At Casey Hall?
Yes. And then I was supposed to put note in my folder to talk about dog ordinances. I don't know if you wanna do any of that today. Otherwise, my other notes are if you come up with anybody for the committees. And then next week, we have, uh, construction permit application, uh, for a lead yard township, uh, confined feeding operation, this one is not a new construction, it's just adding um, to the existing location, so, and right now, besides our regular stuff, that is all I have on the agenda for next week.
Don't get too close to Jack. He sounds terrible.
Any board reports, Jack?
No.
Okay, Roger?
No.
Josh?
Uh, there was an email meeting last week, but I wasn't able to make it, Kyle, uh, looked it up for me, so I was hoping to get, hear from him how all that went, um, we did talk to him briefly.
Okay, um, I had, I missed Care Connections last week, we got started planting last Tuesday in Mayakorn, so got a little bit of, sorry, it was on the agenda and highlights and things, but nothing too shattering, just finalizing the budget, uh, for the next.
Yeah, we got open enrollment on Thursday.
Uh, yep, open enrollment.
Signing up to Carter, I don't know.
Well, the county does open enrollment Thursday, doesn't matter. And other than that.
Then I just need you guys to sign the minutes, there are, I think, some resolutions that you all have to sign.
Okay, let's do that. Oh, I'm on this page. No.
Okay, so you, you all have to sign here, whether you voted a and a for this resolution last week for the compensation. Then instead of Kyle, you'll have to sign there.
Okay, yep.
And then you'll have to sign wherever there's a sign here.
Okay.
Or Kyle.
Okay. I wonder if I. Oh, shoot.
Signed on the wrong side.
I already signed on the wrong side.
Just cross it up and sign on the right side. And then Carter, can you sign this resolution for the rest of the week too? I think we'll use, see the real house sign.
Are we on the right?
No, we'll have to give out and get.
Get your agenda and check it.
Where do we see that?
Yeah, you have to.
Oh. Just anywhere here?
Yeah.
Yep. Hey, anything else? Alright, anything else you think the county needs to know about, really? If not, then entertain a motion to adjourn. No motion by Wacker, second by Plath, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries unanimous, we are adjourned at eight forty-two.